Commissioner Clem? Absent. And Chair Bennett?
Here. Come on, join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Whoa.
Do we have any public comment for the Housing Authority? Nope. Okay. The consent calendar, Counselor Clausen, could you move the consent calendar, please?
Sure, I'd move the consent calendar as written in our agenda for this evening.
Second.
Second by Thomas. Any discussion? Mr. Welch, do you have anything you want to highlight on that calendar?
I don't, Mr. Chair, but thank you.
Okay. Any comments? Discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. We have no other business before the Housing Authority, so we are adjourned.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call to order this evening's meeting for the Urban Renewal Agency for the City of Salem for February 11th, 2013. Would the recorder please call the roll?
Board Member Bennett?
Here.
Board Member Tesler?
Present.
Board Member Nanki is absent. Board Member Clausen?
Here.
Board Member Dickey?
Here.
Board Member Thomas?
Here.
Board Member Benards?
Here.
Board Member Clem?
Here.
Chair Peterson? Here.
I see no reports of boards, commissions, or committees this evening. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment? No, we don't. Is there anyone here who wanted to comment and failed to get their name on the list? All right, seeing none, we'll continue to the consent calendar. Member Bennett, would you please introduce the consent calendar?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Bennett, seconded by Member Tesler, to move the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. I don't see any information reports this evening, or special orders of business, or unfinished business, so I believe that we are adjourned. Thank you. All right, and now we will call to order this evening's meeting of the Salem City Council for February 11th, 2013. Would the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Bennett?
Here.
Counselor Tesler?
Present.
Counselor Nanki is absent. Counselor Clausen?
Here.
Counselor Dickey?
Here.
Counselor Thomas?
Here.
Counselor Benards?
Here.
Counselor Clem?
Here.
Mayor Peterson? Here. Thank you.
All right. Approval of additions and deletions to the agenda. Counselor Bennett, would you introduce those, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move additions, deletions, and revisions to the tonight's agenda.
Aye.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Clausen. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Council comment time. Do any of our counselors present this evening have comments they would like to share? Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Fellow council members and members of the City of Salem, we had the distinct pleasure to do the open house and ribbon cutting for the Polk County Mental Health and Addictions Clinic in West Salem, on Senate Street, adjacent to the Safeway store there. And very excited to see how well Polk County is responding to the growing need for mental health issues in our community. Separate section for children, separate section for adults, a number of converging programs, where the really neat part of it is, is it's sort of a full care facility where if people are having issues in a certain area, there's connections and support for the family, as well as Polk County's done a tremendous job in outreach to all of the schools in the West Salem area, so that teachers are aware that if and when they see things in the classroom where family or child might need help, they've made that connection as well. So I'm very, very honored and pleased that citizens who are needing help are getting it from Polk and Marion Counties, I'm sure. But brand-new center, and if there's any interest in helping out down there, I'm sure Polk County staff would be happy to take your name and number and call you, because there's always great opportunity for volunteers down there, so thank you.
Great, thanks for that report. Counselor Benards?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It was my pleasure at the end of January to be with our city manager, Norris, and our Mayor Anna Peterson, to join with Congressman Kirk Schrader in a community leadership roundtable, where we were able to express some of our concerns to him, so he could take them back to Washington, but knew that he was listening to us, and we had some issues, whether they were the third bridge over the Olamet River and funding for that, or I guess there were several other things that we covered that evening, anyway. But just want to let you know that we were out trying to drum up and let those people in Washington know that we're still here and we want them, want some help from them. Thanks.
Excellent, great, thank you. Other council comments? All right, we will move ahead to public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment this evening? And we do, all right. We have three people that are on the list for public comment this evening. Sarah Denning? And then following her, John Gier, perhaps, I am guessing? And then Herm Boz. Welcome, and you have three minutes, and please state your name and address. And the amber light comes on at the end of two and the red light at the end of three.
Mayor and city councilors, my name is Sarah Doimling. I own property at 2667 Orchard Heights Road Northwest and a wood products business in Polk County, and I'm here to comment on Agenda Item 3.3F, which is that little piece of land underneath the bridges. I'm perplexed, to say the least, that this agenda item has come up again. If that little yellow triangle, or parallelogram, or whatever it is right now, is designated for use as a public park, it will become very complicated and time-consuming to build what could otherwise be a very quick solution to congestion on the Center Street Bridge. And in your handout, you will see two pages from the 1998 Bridgehead Engineering Study to show why that piece of land is important to improving bridge capacity. On page E7, it states that improvements should be made first at the most critical intersections. And that intersection from Center Street off ramp onto Front Street is the most critical intersection for both morning and afternoon time periods for the congestion. And the same report says that as these critical intersections are improved, the river crossing capacity is increased. Page E12 recommends that you construct a free-flow exit ramp that continues as a third northbound lane on Front Street and Commercial Street. And since that was written, we have the new Union Street Bridge that accommodates people who are walking and people who are biking, so it frees up the sidewalk widths on the Center Street Bridge to be used as that ramp lane, so now it won't even impact the Marion Street Park or the Marion Street Bridge. So it's a very elegant, cost-effective solution. And the great part, on page E12, that also, that small change to the bridge would accommodate 6,000 vehicles an hour, as opposed to the 4,000 that cross now. So we're gaining half again as many vehicles across that bridge, which should meet our traffic needs at the rate of growth that we have now for decades. And so if I could ask you--
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay.
Okay.
What's the hurry?
Thank you very much, we appreciate you coming down. Does anyone have questions of her? Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, really not of the Sarah, but I'd like, can we ask staff, or should we bring this up? Does this need to be polled to be discussed, to kind of clarify what's going on here?
I think Mr. Fernandez can clarify it now, is that correct?
Well, my question is really to follow up on the comment. Does this foreclose the option being discussed? Are we creating a barrier to an alternative at the existing bridges?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor. Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. The Bridgehead Engineering Study, let me preface by saying that all of the recommendations that were buildable from the Bridgehead Engineering Study were actually constructed. What is shown in page E12 is the proposal was, is the red line on this map, not the green line, and what it involved was having that right turn lane coming off the ramp then become a free-flow lane. The reason it was not constructed is because it required all of the piers on the Marion Street Bridge to be removed and moved, so there were significant structural issues related to that. So what we ended up building is what you see out there today, which is the signal. So the signal out there is what flushes the ramp out. It is not the best solution, the best solution would have been the free-flow right turn, but that simply was unaffordable. We also constructed the second lane coming off of Center Street heading south on Front Street, and what we did there is we removed one lane, remember, Front Street used to be two lanes southbound, and it becomes one lane southbound, south of Division, so that we could accommodate the second lane coming off the ramp. So this green line that's here, this was never envisioned by Bridgehead, so therefore the parcel in question is not, doesn't impact anything from Bridgehead. Bridgehead is finished, and there are no options in the river crossing that are currently under consideration that would require this parcel.
I guess, though, Mr. Fernandez, my, kind of my underlying question, maybe I wasn't clear enough, does this, green lines, red lines, all that, I'm just looking at the triangle of land, if that transfers to the City of Salem to be parkland, does it foreclose its use for any other purpose, or can the council--
No.
--use it?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that really, to me, is the fundamental, we can do anything we want with that land.
That is correct.
And it doesn't become more difficult to use it?
Does it become more difficult?
It is, it is no more or any less difficult than any other option related to a construction project.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez.
Okay, thank you very much, Susan. Counselor Benards?
I just wondered about, can you address the 4F relative to that area? Once it's into a parkland, you have to go through the federal 4F, is it not?
Well, yes, but it, the parcel is already a park, so it really doesn't matter. I mean, what this staff report is about is who owns it. So we're transferring ownership from the Urban Renewal Agency to the City of Salem. The parcel's use is the parcel's use today, so it really doesn't change anything. So whatever permitting we would have to go through, you know, for some ramp that is really not under consideration, really doesn't change.
Because the property was acquired with tax increment money, it comes with a constitutionally dedicated purpose, and it doesn't matter whether the Urban Renewal Agency owns it or the city owns it. Because it was being transferred to the city, my recommendation was to acknowledge that as part of the transfer. And once the property is sold, you have an issue of what you do, if you do sell it, what do you do with those funds? And so the purpose of this is to simply acknowledge the fact it was purchased with tax increment funds. It has a limitation on its use by virtue of that fact, and when the city acquires it, it comes with a clear indication that it's encumbered with more of that purpose.
Well, the key issue here was is that you have a parcel of land. Are you, by taking the action tonight, are you mitigating, are you going against what the possible future, some Bridgehead that we haven't designed yet, are you doing something? And it sounds like, no, the answer is no, it will not prevent us from doing it.
No, anything that the council can do, it can undo.
And what we're doing this evening is not to decide where ramps go. This is simply a question about transferring the property, the ownership of the property, and that's all we're deciding this evening. Okay, I have another person, is it John Gier? Correct me if I don't say your name correctly.
No, I'm sure the problem is that my handwriting defeats you, as it does most people. My name is John Gier, I live in Ward 1, and I'm here to tell you about a terrific book. It's a wonderful book, it's called Thinking Fast and Slow by Nobel Prize winner Daniel Kahneman. And the reason I tell you about this book during this comment period is that it is a book about warnings, it's a whole book about thinking errors that humans, and especially groups of humans, are prone to. And the most important of the errors that he warns about is the way our mind responds to complex nuanced problems that are difficult to simplify down to a good white hat, black hat, sort of conflict, where you can pick a side and say, oh, I'll go with them. And what is most interesting is that human nature likes that simplified problem solving a lot, and what we really like to do is we put the problem into our brain, and then our brain supplies a rapid answer, and that's the thinking fast part. And what he warns about is that human nature is that we will answer a different question than the one asked, but the answer is so vivid and powerful that our mind sees on that as the answer. And I encourage you to think, is the problem that we're all talking about, dancing around, is the problem how to resolve traffic and quality of life and our urban development issues despite traffic? Or is it, have we seized on a different problem, the wrong problem, of how to get a bridge built? And I would urge you to think very carefully and to read that book, and be aware of that tendency to seize on an attractive simplified problem instead of a more nuanced and important problem. And before you redesignate any land, you triple-check to make sure that you are not foreclosing any options from yourself. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions by counselors? All right, thank you so much. Third person who has signed up, Herm Boz. Welcome, I'm sure you know the drill, the orange light and the red light and the whole thing.
I'll try to follow the directions, okay? I'm Herm Boz, I live in Ward 8, and I live at 1688 Nut Tree Drive Northwest in West Salem. And so I'm here just to address the 10.2 Counselors' Item for Funds for this year's Homeless Connect event, of which I invite all of you to come to, which will be March 26th at First Nazarene Church on Market Street. And we're anticipating another good event, and hope that you'll be able to come. I've had the privilege of co-chairing these events for the last four years, and it's amazing to see what these events impact in our, in our community. I get to see other events created from this event. We get to dollars, see dollars flowing out of it that collaborate in a number of different ways. This year, we did, this year and last year, we did another event in Polk County, which is really an outgrowth of the one we did here in Marion County. And as a result, we served over 400 people who were homeless or at risk of homelessness in Polk County. And last year, for the one in Marion County, we served almost 700 homeless, or those at risk of homelessness, in Marion County. And so I just want to encourage you to help us out again this year. We appreciate your generosity, we appreciate it. Appreciate Cheryl Thomas going to bat for us and helping us out with these things, and I just hope we have a great, successful Homeless Connect again this year. Thank you.
Fine, thank you very much. Are there any questions, Counselor Clausen?
Thank you, Herm. Hey, can you repeat the dates and the time and--
March 26th. It will start at 9:00 a.m. and go to 3:00 p.m., and it's at First Nazarene Church on Market Street.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions, Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Herm, thank you so much for doing this and for helping a lot of people. Can you just describe just two points of information for us? The number of people homeless, to include, I don't know how many children are in there, and then also how the event really leverages with what other agencies in the area, particularly by providing the transportation that's listed in Counselor Thomas's motion.
The things that we were impressed with last year was the number of children who came to the event. We had 251 males, 203 females, and 235 children. And that was a brand-new demographic for us to look at, to think that there were that many children who came to an event for homelessness. And then, what was your other question?
The other agencies and how leveraging--
We have somewhere between 60 and 80 other agencies that we partner with. You know, I was sitting next to Josh up here and her husband, who is CEO of Chariots. Chariots has been a wonderful partner, providing free transportation for folks to get to and from. Community Action Agency, Salem Leadership Foundation, Northwest Human Services, Salvation Army, Union Gospel Mission, YWCA, YMCA, just a whole host of partners. Marion Polk Food Share has been very generous every year and provided a lot of the food that we provide, and guests who come can eat all day long. They don't get that very often, usually they're given one or two meals a day, but when they come to our event, they can eat all day if they want to. Just a whole host of partners, Faith Community, First Baptist Church has hosted it three years, I think. This will be the second year for First Nazarene to host the event. A lot of churches come alongside of us and help us out. Hands-on, Mid-Olamet Valley comes, and they provide all of our services for volunteers. We'll have anywhere from 150 to 175 volunteers to help with this event. Just a whole host of partners.
County and vets?
What's that, veterans?
County and veterans agencies.
Yeah, we have SOVA, which is serving our veterans at home, they provide stand-down every year, and they come and provide a lot of hands-on giving away items. The vet centers represented there. We also get Veterans Administrations from up in Vancouver to come down, and they have some real professionals that come down, and it's exciting to see a veteran talk to one of these people at the event and get answers. It's just really exciting for that to happen, and you can actually watch somebody go from one table to another table to another table, and in a matter of an hour or two, get services and get answers to their questions, which normally would take them weeks to be able to connect with that many things at a time, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much, and thanks for your work. Counselor Tesler?
Thanks for coming down tonight. I was just curious why this request didn't go through the Social Services Advisory Board, which is standard protocol for these requests, and we do ask that people who come to us and ask us for these funds do go through that route, so it's not arbitrary and capricious?
I'll give you two answers, okay? One is my ignorance, okay, of how the process works, and, but we're learning and we're getting closer. The other one is that Community Action Agency did go to the grant training for the grant process and was kind of discouraged because of the requirements that were upon the grant, that to ask for $2,000 and go through all the requirements that were there, it was just really difficult to determine how valuable that was. If you have to put staff time into helping create all the stuff that needed to be reported, it was very difficult. We met with Linda Norris, and she helped us navigate through some things, and we're working together to find out if we have to report all the things that are there, or if there's some of those things we don't have to report on in order to get the guns, get the funds through the Social Services Advisory Board. Is that helpful?
Yes, I have a question for staff. Could you tell me how much lead time people have to fill out these applications, and how many pages this application might have?
Actually, Mr. Wells might be better, I understand that the notification went out in November.
That's right. John Wells, Urban Development. The applications have gone to a digital process, they're all electronic now. Typically, it takes about an hour to fill out a grant for, this one, I believe, probably been a little more simple because it was not complicated. But it's, it's all done electronically, and we are available for questions at any time if people are having--
And so a member of the public has a question on filling out this application, they can call and someone will help them, and there are people there that are available for those services. And everyone else that goes through this process fills out this application and submits it to you, correct?
To, to the federal programs, and then the Social Services Advisory Board goes through them and evaluates them in a competitive, in a competitive process.
Okay, so Social Services has gone through all these applications this year, this batch has been evaluated, ranked, considered, discussed by the board already. This has already been done.
That's going on right now, the application's closed at the end of, I think, January 2nd or January 3rd.
Okay.
So they're now going through that process.
And so that window is still open, kind of?
The funding for this year would have happened during the application cycle last year, so that's where, so if they were looking for money for March, they would have had to been in last year's cycle in order to qualify for it.
Okay, thank you, I believe that answers my questions. Thank you.
Counselor Clem, and then I have a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Herm, did you say what the total homeless count was, or did I ask, maybe?
For this year?
For this last March, or--
We just finished-- We just finished it.
Yeah.
We don't know that, we don't know this year yet.
Well, you remember close to what it was last year?
They're usually around 3,000.
Okay.
We usually get a count for Marion Polk County, somewhere's around 3,000 who we count living in shelters, or street counts that we get a count for through Marion Polk County.
And these numbers have changed because now the counting process is different, such that they really truly can't be living somewhere. that they really truly can't be living somewhere, even part-time, and still be called homeless?
The, the numbers have changed, and HUD's requirements have also changed. A lot of shelters that we used to be able to use in the homeless count, we're no longer able to use those because they've changed some of the criteria that they have for homeless. And so some of the shelters that actually do take care of homeless can't be counted as homeless any longer. And so last year's numbers were quite low in, in light of only the HUD numbers were being reported. And so when we think of homelessness, HUD looks at primarily chronic homelessness, who are homeless at that time, on that day. And as a community, we open up the view of homelessness to be people who are couch-surfing, multiple families living together. We, we consider those folks to be homeless as well, but HUD does not include those in their count.
I have a question for, I think it's actually for Mr. Wells, because you were just describing the process that the Social Services Advisory Board is in the process of now.
That's correct.
And so that those decisions have not fully been made yet for this year?
But for, for the, the decisions that are being made right now are for funding 2013, 2014. It's on the fiscal year.
Okay.
So that would be approved by the council through the budget process.
I see.
And then those funds would be available from July of this year through July 2014.
And so are we always on this same cycle every year?
Yes.
Because what I remember was last year, this request came to us as a special request direct to city council, again, not through the Social Services Advisory Application Process. And I'm wondering, since it's come to us now two years in a row in this other way, I wondered if maybe something had changed from last year to this year that would cause the process to be different?
Well, well, actually, according to our records, they did go through an application process for fiscal year 2011, 2012, and were allocated in, in that fiscal year. But evidently, for whatever reason, chose not to apply last dis, or a year ago for funding for 2013.
For this time?
Yeah.
Okay. So we did fund last year's?
Through, in 2011, 2012, that was funded, and it had gone through the, the process. It had been, then been an application submitted, and it was, it was approved and funded. And I think, I think the, the motion speaks to that.
Councilor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a, kind of a similar recollection to the mayor's. So hasn't this been in front of us, though, as a special order of business, separate from our budget process? Is it the year before that?
The year before that, correct, Councilor.
So the year before that, it's brought to us directly. Then they apply, this year they're not. What changed? What made it so much harder? Once they learned the lesson, did the application, I, I don't understand why this is here.
I, I would have to defer to the organization's why they chose, they chose not to apply.
Okay. All right, thank you, thank you, Herm, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, we're going to move on. We had no one else signed up for public comment, so we'll move to the consent calendar. Councilor Bennett, will you please introduce the consent calendar?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move the consent calendar with the following polls. 3.3D by Councilor Clem.
Okay.
Then I would like to record Counselor Clem on, I have to turn back here to see it, 3.3H, voting no on council position on Senate Bill 251.
Other than that, he's yes.
Other than that, he's for everything else.
All right. Okay. Is there a second to the, to the introduction of the consent calendar? Yes, Counselor, oh. All right, actually, Counselor Dickey seconded you, seconded the motion, thank you. So it's been moved by, by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Dickey to approve the consent calendar with the exception of the poll on 3.3D. And recording that Counselor Clem votes no on the item H for the Senate Bill 251. Okay.
Just a comment on it?
A comment, yes.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I am relying heavily on the representations made by Mr. Fernandez on the ability to use that property at the end of the bridge for any purpose the council wants to use it for. I just want to make that very, very clear, that we have done nothing to foreclose use of that property by taking ownership of it as a city.
All right. Now, to approve the consent calendar as noted, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries, thank you very much. We have one public hearing this evening for a, would the recorder please introduce the public hearing, the ordinance?
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony regarding Ordinance Bill Number 413 relating to the expiration and extension of subdivisions, partitions, replats, and urban growth area development permit preliminary declarations amending Salem Revised Code Chapters 63, 3, 66, and 300.
Thank you, and we have a staff report?
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Bryce Bishop with the Planning Division, and I'm here tonight to present the staff report for draft of our Ordinance Bill Number 413, dealing with the modification and expiration, modifying the expiration of land division and UGA development approvals. So in terms of explaining this, I wanted to illustrate how it works today in the code in terms of an example of a UGA development permit and a subdivision as an example. So, so if you want to divide land into multiple parcels or multiple lots today, the first thing you need to determine is whether or not, or what type of facilities you need to provide to serve the subdivision. So if you're outside of the urban service area, which is the area where facilities are planned and exist to be provided, you would have to do a UGA permit. The purpose of the UGA permit is to identify what public facilities, such as sewer, water, stormwater, streets, and parks, are needed to serve the subdivision. And so currently in the code today, the UGA preliminary declaration is required first before you get into the actual subdivision application. So then, after you apply for your UGA preliminary declaration, that goes through the process and it gets approved, then you come in for the next step with your actual proposal to divide the parcels or divide the land into individual lots. And so that's, would be the tentative subdivision plan, which is on the box down here. So when you do the tentative subdivision plan, that lays out your, your layout of your subdivision, the streets, the connectivity, the lots, the lot sizes, and everything that you need to know, or the, and the city and the, and the neighbors and the applicant needs to know in terms of how that land will at least be divided, you know, initially. And so that goes through a process where notices provided and opportunity for comment is made. And then once the decision is issued, the applicant has six, initially two years to go forth and prepare the final plat. And then if that, if the final plat can't be prepared within that two-year period, there's two additional two-year extensions that are allowed for a total of six years for the expiration period. And in the process of doing the final plat, the applicant has to install the utilities, so they have to put in the sewer lines, the water lines, and the stormwater system, and deal with constructing the streets. They have to survey the lots in the subdivision, and they have to monument the property corners and prepare that, that plat, which is the, the legal document that gets recorded in the county and actually makes those legal units of land. So, and back when the economy was strong, there were a lot of applications for UGAs and subdivisions and other types of land divisions, like partitions and replats that were approved. So now with the economy the way it is, and in the downtime, there's a lot of these applications that were previously approved that haven't been completed, and they're nearing their six-year maximum expiration period, so there's an issue where if these projects don't get relief in some other manner, they will expire, and then that will result, result in additional costs and delay to the applicant that are, that, you know, are largely unnecessary. So we're, so the home builders of Marion and Polk Counties approached us to see if we, if there's anything we could do to the code to address the issue. So we did go away and we came up with a proposed amendment. And that proposed amendment does a few things. So the first thing that it does is that it eliminates the requirement for a UGA permit being approved prior to making an application for a subdivision. And that's important because right now, you have to get the UGA permit first, and then the subdivision next, and each have their own approval, expiration periods. So it results in a situation where the UGA permit can expire before the subdivision expires, and they're really dependent upon each other and need to be both present in order, you know, to develop the property. Those approvals need to be present. So we've eliminated the requirement that the UGA permit comes first, and so then you could submit them at the same time as the subdivision. And then we've also eliminated, or rather tied, to the expiration of the UGA preliminary declaration to the expiration of the subdivision. So what that means, if you have a UGA permit for a subdivision, is that it's going to remain valid until the subdivision expires. So it doesn't have its own six-year expiration period anymore, it's just tied to the, to the regular, to the expiration of the subdivision. And the other thing that we've done is we've taken the, the maximum expiration period of six years and extended it out to a full, to 10 years by adding two additional two-year extensions. So today you get two extensions of two years. Under the proposed amendment, you get four extensions of two years. And the 10 years proposed in the, in the code amendment is consistent with what we require for phased subdivisions today. We allow 10 years for them to be completed, and it's also consistent with the maximum period of time that's allowed under state law for, for land divisions. So that, that's the proposed amendment. And so in closing, I would just say that amendments are needed to address an economic issue that's beyond the control of applicants. They provide additional flexibility by allowing for more time for projects to be completed, and they still retain the city's ability to not approve an extension. If the standards have changed at any point in that 10 years, where if the standards change and somebody comes in for an extension, the city won't, can't approve that extension. So it ensures that only those projects that are, you know, currently valid and still meet the criteria of the code will go forward in the future.
All right, thank you very much. We have three people who've signed up, and the first is Josh Pollak, who I understand represents the, you were the land use chair for, is it West Salem Neighborhood Association?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Welcome, and you have five minutes. So apparently, the amber light comes on at the end of four, and then the red at the end of five, right?
Oh, Christmas, Christmas.
Okay, welcome.
Christmas comes early. My name is Josh Pollak. I am the land use chair for West Salem Neighborhood Association. Madam Mayor and city council member, I appreciate the time that I can address you here, and it's always an honor to speak on behalf of West Salem. We, West Salem identified and deliberated on this amendment, and we came up with three, three issues, an economic issue, a substantive issue, and a procedural issue. Economically, we're aware that a project that was initially plotted to be only two years could technically go another eight years. And so we're, the developers looking at added finance, interest, insurance, taxes, eight years of taxes and things like that, that they weren't really anticipating. And the reality is, is that the consumer's going to bear that cost. So the neighborhood association will not want our prospective homebuyers and our future neighbors to have, to incur any more costs if legally they don't have to. And so this proposal, providing us some safeguards, you know, would, would be one way that the developer wouldn't have to go back to square one and pass on that cost to the consumer. The next is the substantive issue. In, in the development section, I mean, that's 10 years, a decade, a lot could happen a decade. The city has invested time to redo their, look at their uniform development code, you have stormwater issues and standards that have changed. And so it was really, we worried about, and of course, there's Salem Revised Code changes, and our neighborhood association plan, which is basically adopted into the comprehensive plan, might have changes as well. So we're wondering if something 10 years ago would be, continue to be a good fit, you know, when developed. So in the administrative, I spoke to staff, and they basically have stated that in their administrative review, that's exactly what they're going to be looking for. Is, is, will the development still be a good fit? If approved, if the extension is approved, will it be in non-compliance? Will that area be a pocket of non-compliance where everywhere else would be a higher standard? So they basically assured me that that's part of the things that they will be looking for before approving it. And then the last one is the procedural, and we were concerned because as we looked at this amendment, we said, okay, if it's in non-compliant, what are they going to do? So we looked at the revocation code. Well, if it says, it does even actually say there, if it's not in compliance with the Salem Revised Code or the comprehensive plan, they don't, they could revoke it. But in speaking with staff, we understand the issue is that when they go to do this review, if it's in non-compliance, they just won't approve the, approve the extension, so it would expire. Then they have to go by, you know, back to square one, which it should. But let's say, the other issue we had is, let's say that the developer wants to be proactive, and he knows that his development's not going to come up to par, so he wants to amend and modify. Well, this code is really clear. Since it's a type-one review, and it's administrative review, staff can't approve it if there's any kind of modification. They, basically, it will go back to the public notification and public comment, which is fine for us, that's what we want. If, because we don't want it on this type-one review, because originally, we would have had input there. So given, given all that I speak about right now, we feel there's enough safeguards to assure that anything won't be approved, that a plan won't be approved that will not meet with all the standards, because, you know, the city's going in a great direction in land development, and so we really want to make sure we continue to go that way. So as, the West Salem Neighborhood Association voted on this issue, and we vote to support it, given the provisions that I just stated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think there might be some questions for you, Counselor Tesler.
Well, thanks a lot for coming down, and you know, first thing I got to say, if West Salem supports it, it must be okay. Because, you know, I mean, really, West Salem, I mean, to be perfectly frank with you, you guys have had some enormous development issues to deal with. And, you know, I think of all the areas in the city, the pressure is, is probably the greatest in West Salem. And I just, you know, really would commend you on the way that you have handled this issue and others throughout the years. I really appreciate your thoughtful approaches and your support of this in particular. So, thank you.
Well, I'm the new kid on the block, so it's a team effort, and Janet Noes was my, Janet Noes was my prior person on the land use chair, and then of course, all of our chairs, from Don Holmuth and Herm Boz, and Heather Swanson, and our current new one, Kenji. So we appreciate that, thank you very, very much.
Great. Thank you. Other questions or comments? Counselor Clem?
Yes, thanks, Josh. As usual, thorough. Just want to, want to make sure that the, you understood, that we're clear on the type-one. If there's a modification, it's going back through the whole process again.
Right, exactly.
And that's exactly what West Salem Neighborhood Association asked for in the, starting about four years ago, when they started doing the Neighborhood Task Force, that, you know, if the developer comes in with A and then X years later develops B, you get a full swing at it all the way from the beginning.
And it's very clear in the code.
Okay.
It says, if there's any changes, it can't approve the extension.
Yeah, okay.
It's very tight, so, that's what we like. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate your, your time and your thoroughness. Mike Erdman, and then Mark Grims, and you'll have three minutes each.
All right, so I'll go a little quicker. Madam Mayor, members of the council, Mike Erdman, with the Home Builders Association of Marion and Polk Counties, 385 Taylor Street Northeast. And we are here, obviously, to urge you to, to adopt this code amendment. And first, I want to compliment the West Salem Neighborhood Association. It's great to be down here with both the Home Builders Association and the neighborhoods on the same side of a development code issue. Really, this addresses, as was said, kind of the unique circumstances that have happened with kind of the unprecedented drop in the housing market. We've got a number of situations in which developers received tentative plan approval, you know, in 2007, only to see the market collapse. And we saw lot prices drop by 50 to 75 percent. And very quickly, those developers realized that the cost of developing lots actually exceeded what they'd be able to sell those lots for. And so they put their plans on hold, they got their first extension, let's say, in 2009, they got another two-year extension in 2011. Well, here we are in 2013, and they're coming up on expiration. And unless we do something to address that, they're going to have to start that whole process all over again. And obviously, there's a lot of cost behind that. And obviously, there's a lot of cost behind that, there's a lot of delay. And from an industry perspective, we're concerned about that, partly because I think we're looking at a, frankly, a shortage of decent lots in the not-so-distant future. We're kind of looking at what's happening in some parts of the state, we're looking at what's happening around town here with some folks picking up lots. And I think we're going to see a scarcity of decent lots not too far down the road. So we don't want to hinder that. So by, by granting the potential for those additional two-year extensions, you're going to prevent folks from having to go through that process again, incur all of that cost. You know, it's important to note, I think it's been stressed, of course, that if the standards change, the city is not obligated to grant that extension. You've got that safeguard, so really it doesn't do anything different than what we have with the existing extension process. It's a sensible change. We'd encourage you to vote in favor.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there questions for Mr. Erdman? All right. Thanks. And Mark Grims.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Mark Grims. I'm with Multitec Engineering. Our office is at 1155 13th Street Southeast in Salem. And, and we're here to speak on this matter for you this evening. Many of you know, I've been doing land planning and land development work in Salem for, it's gone pretty close to 40 years. So I've been at it a long time. And like Mike said, we had a fair number of clients and clients that we, that weren't ours but that we knew about that were working hard in the, in the mid 2000s to try to get projects aligned to fit. And of course, I don't think anybody would have envisioned that what we've, what we had happen in, in 2008 would have lasted this long. We kept thinking that projects, we would be able to start bringing subdivision projects back online in 2011 and then we thought 2012. It's now 2013 and we're starting to do a few little projects, smaller ones, but most of the ones that are impacted by or that will benefit from this are larger projects that are still waiting to ramp up, to get going. And so we're, we ask your support for this type of a process that gives us a chance to, to at least have the opportunity to bring before staff the requests for extensions. You know, I sit on the, on the UDC committee, have been involved in that, so I'm aware of what's been going on there and there hasn't been any, anything that's come through that that would prevent subdivisions from being extended based on your current subdivision code. I sit on your stormwater advisory committee now that, that Mr. Chandler heads up and will be looking at that. And I'm sure that there'll be some things that'll come out of that. And part of what we'll look at from my perspective on that committee will be ways to implement those changes in projects that are phased subdivisions, subdivisions that are underway that developers can't afford to do and bring them into play. So I've, I've had one project that, in West Salem, that went back and went through a modification to a part of the project in order to come, to bring it into better planning standards. It was a phased project. That client invested several hundred thousand dollars in infrastructure through his UGA permit and then those two phases have gotten stalled. And if he doesn't get an extension of those two phases, then he's going to be faced having to start over with the uncertainty of what happens if, with all that investment he's made before he can finish out. So we, we're here asking along with the Home Builders Association for your support in this. I don't think there's any real risk to the, to the community from it because you have your staff to continue to do what they've been doing. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any of me.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from counselors? All right. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you taking time to be here this evening. All right. Are there any questions of, of the staff? All right, then we'll close this hearing. And Counselor Bennett, would you please introduce this?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Clausen to move the staff recommendation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. We'll move to special orders of business. And Counselor Claus, Counselor Clem, you had an item pulled, 3.3D.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you very much. On item 3.3D, specialized salary adjustment for city attorney, I move that this item be tabled.
And is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Clem, seconded by Counselor Benars, to table this item from this evening's consideration. Is there discussion? Counselor Clem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I, I would prefer to table it to a certain date or delay it to a certain date simply because it's, it's, it portends that we'll have difficulty in hiring a new city attorney with all respect to our current city attorney and the fact that he may need to continue on for some time until such time as we replace the city attorney and the good work that our HR department does. But I'm concerned that we'd be essentially giving a raise to a position for an incumbent person who hasn't retired yet, but in fact, if held over on contract and/or, we'd be given a raise to a person who hasn't been hired yet. And so I'm concerned that, the perception that I have is, is that we're, we're assuming that we won't be able to hire somebody until we've tried. I, I think it, in the best interest of the city, to go out and try to hire somebody. And then if it looks like we're having difficulty like we have had with other positions, then we, you know, take a look at, are we at market to be able to hire? But I'm a little concerned that we're just sort of supposing that it's going to be hard to, there's, you can, we can always justify salaries, but I think at this point in time, just for now, I think until we get through the budget process, I think it would be a good idea to just hold out for a little while longer and, and see what happens. And again, with all great respect to the city attorney who's announced that maybe changing his status with the city, I'll let him speak to that. But I think being, supposing that we need to give a raise before we really do, I, I think it would be in the best interest, particularly with a tight budget year upon us, that we just hold off for now.
Counselor Benars, did I see your hand up?
No, I just.
No, all right. Counselor Tesler and then Counselor Bennett.
Thank you. I'm, I'm not going to support this motion and I'll tell you why. I think I, I think the best thing to do is just to present a fishing analogy. If you want a big fish and the best fish, you got to use the right bait. And, you know, if you want a little fish, then use little bait. And we want a big fish and we want the best fish we could possibly catch. And if you're going to get the best, the best candidates and a good pool of the best that you can attract, then you need to have the good bait. And this position, to be frank with you, at the salary level, doesn't pay that much, really, for an attorney, for a city attorney, comparably speaking. And I'm not talking about comparable to Portland, I'm talking about comparable to Gresham or places like that. So we need to up the ante. And I, I feel pretty strongly about that.
And so you're saying you are vote, you will be voting against this particular motion?
Correct. I don't want to table this. I, I want to support what staff has said.
Okay. I want to clear.
Up the ante.
What you were saying. Okay. Counselor Bennett.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I'm just wondering if, you know, sort of between these two, there might not be a happy medium where we could figure out postponement to a date certain that, I think that Counselor Clem mentioned that, to, to give ourselves a chance to have the, the position advertised, see what happens, kind of get a sense of the market. Would that, does that sound, but I don't know what that date is and I think that's what probably, I would just assume limited the counselor's ability to pick a date. So maybe the manager could help.
I just want to be, I want to be clear that I will not be working after June 30th of this year.
Yes, I wanted to talk a little bit about the timeframe.
Well, you know, I want to interrupt for a moment. I want to just interrupt for a moment. I find it difficult to discuss a salary range for a position and suddenly we're talking about an individual. And I always like to try to keep the individual separate from the administrative decisions that have to do with dollars. So I want to be careful that we're not mixing it up here.
Yes. And just for council's information, I want you to know that Mr. Tosh, his retirement date is February 28th. Recognizing that it will likely take us longer than that to recruit, has agreed to stay until, for a date certain or until it's filled. If we have to go out, and that's about a two-month process, don't find anyone and then have to go through another two-month process, it's going to be very difficult to provide the city attorney services we need for that time period. So my decision to bring before council now is because I'd like to go out one time, find a candidate and be able to get them on board and get the city attorney's office moving.
Counselor Benars and then Counselor Clausen.
I'm, again, new to the game, but, but have, if we don't have a city attorney or if we have one, if we're looking for one at that point at the, at a different rate, do we ever go to outside, I mean, I know we do, go to outside council and fill in where we, where we don't have?
It would be quite a bit more expensive to do that, to go for outside and would still need somebody internally managing the internal city organization, the legal staff.
Including all the benefits and everything because we're not talking just the wages. We're talking.
No, it would, it would be considerably more expensive.
This issue came up a number of years ago in the budget process. At the, at the time that Eugene, which is a similarly sized city, was, still had retained counsel. The department's budget at that point was 1.2 million and Eugene's was over four. So it's, it's really not cost effective, especially when you start looking at, because we're self-insured, we have an in-house litigator, you know, what it would take to handle two of those cases would, covers the cost of the litigator and we've got 20 cases going at any point in time. So, you know, it's just simply not cost effective for a city this size.
I, I wasn't thinking of anything long-term. I was just thinking of a, something that ties over if we had to adjust.
Yes. It would, it would be considerably more expensive.
Thank you.
Counselor Clausen and then Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I ironically have a procedural question for our city attorney.
I am still your city attorney and this, you know, this really doesn't affect me. This is my successor.
Because my cohort beside me has gone, who I would normally whisper the question to, if Counselor Clem's motion fails, what happens then? Do we need to make a substitute motion if Counselor Tesler's idea of just moving this forward, staff recommendation, was to move forward?
Yeah, tabling is just a procedural motion. And so you put it on the table and it stays on the table until someone makes a motion to take you off the table.
I see. And if it's voted down, then it goes back to staff recommendation for consideration.
Well, it goes back to, for a motion.
Okay. High fall. Thank you.
Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to clarify what the manager said, okay? Because I, I heard four months when I added up two and two.
That's right.
Okay. So you're saying that your initial advertisement, recruiting process is a two-month?
At least, yes.
At least. So at this point, you would go out with the existing salary schedule.
Right, that's right. Potentially go through screening applicants, go through an interview process if we felt that we had applicants who met the criteria. And if that wasn't successful, then we would start again and go through another recruitment process, screening, interviewing process to find a candidate.
Okay. Thank you.
Did I answer your question?
Yeah, you did. I, I was thinking it was a little more rapid than that, but I see what you're saying.
Yes, I, I wish it was, but really to get into the publications, we need to get to and to advertise it as broadly as I think we need to advertise it. It really does take a couple of months to get the lead time for the publications, get the word out, get the applications back, go through the screening process.
And what we would be approving, if I understand this, if this were to be approved, is your advertised price? This is what we would allow you to advertise the range.
The range would increase to 104,765 to 132,791. That gives us room within that range to hire someone, but it, I think the maximum salary being hire a male, I would expect will draw more interest given what other city attorneys in smaller cities are making and what their deputy or assistant city attorneys are making now.
And as I read this, then you're really looking at about 500 a month on the low end and 600 a month on the high end, is what you're asking for.
I haven't done the monthly calculation, but I'm going to.
Just looking at it real quick.
Assume your numbers are correct.
Counselor Claus, Counselor Clem and then Counselor Benars.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The intent of my motion is to table it so that we can have future discussion on it. It's not to throw off the recruitment process or cast light on anybody. The, the idea is, is that let's see what the market does. And, and again, you're going to offer a range based on their experience, based on the kinds of qualifications we're looking for. I, I'd say let's get the recruitment out there and then if it looks like it needs to be brought off the table, again, that's, I'm not voting against this. I'm voting on, let's get the recruitment going and see what we can get. And if we need more bait for bigger fish, let's do so then. So please, understand that this tabling is nothing more than procedural and I, and I would urge that we vote on it.
Counselor Benars.
Having just gone through a hiring process at a nonprofit that I'm involved in, the same thing has come up where you have this range and I, you know, I support Counselor Clem's motion, the motion, because I think what is going to happen is if you do come back with a particular attorney who you say, you know, this is a real gem, this is, this is crème de la crème, I really need something more, either we go into an executive session or, so that you can get a discussion or a decision on that matter, you come back to us and we say, yeah, yeah, I think it's worth the extra 5%. But other than that, we continue on with what we.
Actually, that's not a proper subject for executive session.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's not what I'm worried about. What I'm worried about is not being able to find that gem because our salary's too much lower than our comparable agencies. I'm worried about not being able to track someone or taking too long with the recruitment process so we end with no city attorney for a period of time.
Having just, having just spent a work session talking about the shortage of funds for the streets, I'm, you know, painfully aware that, I don't have a great answer. There's just not enough money in the world to, to do all the things that we really, really need to do.
Counselor Bennett.
That, well said. I'll tell you, have a bad attorney, you'll find out how much money you really have. That's the, probably the thing that worries me the most when we talk about this. But what we're talking about is an advertised, an advertising number, right? I mean, that is what you're asking us for.
Right, that's correct.
Is a number you can advertise. I'm going to, can I offer a substitute motion on this?
Because it's a motion to table.
Probably not, probably aren't supposed to be debated.
I think on a, I think on a, it's not deba, it's actually not supposed to be debatable. So you, you really shouldn't.
Since we passed through that door.
Yeah. You're like Alice in Wonderland here. We're down into the, yes.
I would be interested in, in, I think I'd, I'd be interested in pushing this forward a little bit, just to give ourselves a chance to talk about this some more.
All right.
So I'd ask you to defeat the motion and I'll give you a motion for a date, sir.
All right. So then the motion on the floor right now is to table. It was moved by Counselor Clem and seconded by Counselor Benars to table this motion. And I'll call for the question. All those in favor of tabling this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Okay. Nays have it. All right. That motion has been defeated and so we're back to the original motion?
We need a motion now.
We don't have a motion. Now we have a hand in the air. Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I, I move this issue be resubmitted on the council agenda for March 11th.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett, seconded by Counselor Thomas to place this motion on, to place this item on the council agenda for March 11th.
Mayor, if I could remind you, you and the other counselors who are going to the National League of Cities won't be here on that meeting and that would essentially delay the recruitment for one month.
Madam Mayor, I, I misspoke myself. I meant February. Madam Mayor, I, I misspoke myself, I meant February 25th.
All right, February, all right, it's February 25th, and was there a second to that? Oh, yes, thank you, I'm sorry, there, it was moved and seconded, is that adjustment all right with you, Counselor Thomas, to February 25th?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, the motion on the floor is to bring this motion back to council at the next meeting, which is February 25th. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion, oh, thank you.
Sorry, that's okay though, I'm only one.
Yes, okay. Motion passes and one nay vote by Counselor Clausen. Thank you, all right. We have no unfinished business, and there are several information reports in the, in the agendas, so please take a note of those. Did anyone have any questions or want to call any of those up? Okay, moving on to ordinances. First reading, would the city recorder please introduce the ordinance?
Ordinance Bill Number 213 relating to adoption of the Salem Municipal Airport Master Plan, a detailed plan of the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan, amending SRC 64.230.
All right, thank you very much. Is there a motion, Counselor, let's see, Counselor?
Tesler.
Tesler is going to make a motion on this, thank you.
Thank you, I will gladly move staff recommendation on this one.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Tesler and seconded by Counselor Clausen. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries, thank you. And would the recorder please introduce the next ordinance bill?
Ordinance Bill Number 813 declaring and proclaiming certain territory located at 2620 Lancaster Drive Northeast, annexed to the City of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Marion County Fire District Number One and the East Salem Service District.
Thank you. Counselor Thomas, this is in your ward, would you like to make a motion, please?
Yes, I move staff recommendation.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Tes, Counselor Thomas and seconded by Counselor Tesler, and all those in favor, is there any discussion? Counselor Clausen and then Counselor Benars.
Sorry, I was just scratching my ear.
Oh, all right.
I'm not very good at an option.
No, you're not, you'd be buying the place. Counselor Benars, you had a motion, or are you having a question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have a whole series of these ordinance bills declaring and proclaiming a territory. Anyway, are they all tied to the, the election that we had in November? Is that why we see so many of them all of a sudden?
Yes.
Okay.
So these have already been, right, these have been passed by the voters, and then they come to us to adopt, correct? Formalize.
Okay.
But we, can, can we do them in lot, all at once, or no?
No, you have to, you have to read the title.
You do each one separately.
It is required by the charter. If you do not read the title, you do not enact the ordinance, which means you would not annex the territory.
All right, I will stop trying to speed this up. Okay, we're back to ordinance B, or item B, and it was moved by Counselor Thomas and seconded by Counselor Tesler. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries, and item C, would the recorder please introduce?
Ordinance Bill Number 913 declaring and proclaiming certain territory located at 1900 Block of Wallace Road Northwest, annexed to the City of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District.
Counselor Clem, this is in your ward, would you like to introduce a motion?
Yes, I move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Clem and seconded by Counselor Benars to move staff recommendation. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries, thank you. And would the city recorder please introduce item D?
Ordinance Bill Number 1013 declaring and proclaiming certain territory located at 2395 Doakes Ferry Road Northwest, annexed to the City of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District.
Thank you. Counselor Clem, again, in your ward.
Yes, I move staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Clem, seconded by Counselor Benars to move the staff recommendation. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries, thank you. Item E, would the recorder please introduce that?
Ordinance Bill Number 1113 declaring and proclaiming certain territory located at 2540 Brush College Road Northwest, annexed to the City of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District.
Thank you. And that's Counselor Clem, thank you, sir.
Yes, I move staff recommendation again.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Clem, seconded by Counselor Benars, to move staff recommendation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries, thank you. Item F, would the recorder please introduce that?
Ordinance Bill Number 1213 declaring and proclaiming certain territory located at 2800 Block of Orchard Heights Road Northwest, annexed to the City of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District.
Thank you. Counselor Clem?
Yes, I move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Clem and seconded by Counselor Benars to move staff recommendation. Is there discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries, thank you. And item G, would the recorder please introduce it?
Ordinance Bill Number 1313 declaring and proclaiming certain territory located at 4573 Center Street Northeast, annexed to the City of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Marion County Fire District Number One, Suburban East Salem Water District and the East Salem Sewer and Drainage District.
Thank you. Counselor Tes, Counselor Thomas, this is in your ward, would you please introduce a motion?
I move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Thomas and seconded by Counselor Benars to move staff recommendation. All, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries, thank you. And would the recorder please introduce item H?
Ordinance Bill Number 1413 declaring and proclaiming certain territory located at 4790 and 4810 Auburn Road Northeast, annexed to the City of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Marion County Fire District Number One and the East Salem Sewer and Drainage District.
Thank you. This is, again, in Counselor Thomas's ward, would you introduce a motion?
I move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Thomas and seconded by Counselor Benars to move staff recommendation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries, thank you. Item I, would you please, would the recorder please introduce that?
Ordinance Bill Number 1513 declaring and proclaiming certain territory located at 2752 Boon, excuse me, Boon Road Southeast, annexed to the City of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District.
Thank you. This is in Counselor Clausen's ward, would you like to introduce a motion?
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Clausen and seconded by Counselor Thomas to move the staff recommendation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries, thank you. Would the recorder please introduce item J?
Ordinance Bill Number 1613 declaring and proclaiming certain territory located at 4800 to 4900 Block of 32nd Avenue Southeast, annexed to the City of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District and the Santee Am Water Control District.
Thank you. Counselor Clausen, this is in your ward, would you like to introduce a motion?
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Clausen and seconded by Counselor Thomas to move the staff recommendation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries, and would the recorder please introduce item K?
Ordinance Bill Number 1813 declaring and proclaiming certain territory located at 2400 Block of Walker, Walker Road Northeast, annexed to the City of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Marion County Fire District Number One.
Counselor Thomas, this is in your ward.
I move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Thomas and seconded by Counselor Benars to move staff recommendation. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries, all right. I think we're going to have a lot of little welcome wagon baskets or something, right? Several of you have new constituents, congratulations. We have one more item, item L, would the recorder please introduce that?
Ordinance Bill Number 2013 relating to the Salem Downtown Economic Improvement District, amending SRC 44.035.
Counselor Bennett, this is in your ward.
I'll move staff recommendation.
All right.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett, seconded by Counselor Benars, to move the staff recommendation. Is there any discussion? Counselor Benars.
I just want to say that it's been, I don't know if it's been 10 or 12 years ago, but it was a committee that I was on that started this EID so many years ago, and I'd like to see it continue on.
All right, and Counselor Clausen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, this one kind of came as a surprise to me, is, I was wondering if Counselor Bennett wouldn't mind giving a little background on why we're doing this or kind of where that came from. Is that okay with you, Counselor Bennett?
That it, it changes the terms on contractor from may to shall, do I remember that correctly?
From shall to may.
Shall to may.
From shall to may.
It, it makes it a little more, it gives it more flexibility for the city to deal with the EID.
Okay.
Counselor Clausen?
One follow-up question. Has, have the downtown businesses been asked about this, or the advisory board, or anything along those lines? I mean, I know we had some, you know, a lag time here with this last round of finding an administrator, is that kind of where this is stemming from, or?
It is. When we go through a transition period like we did with the last RFP, everything just comes to a stop with the language, the way we have it right now. So we wanted to address that language and provide more flexibility when we have those issues.
Okay, and then were the businesses consulted on it? I'm assuming they're behind it, but-
We have not consulted businesses, and I do not know whether they are or not.
I just, I'm curious about it, I have almost nothing to do with the downtown EID, but I definitely don't want to see us in the business of running that EID either. I mean, all respect to Counselor Benars, I agree, I don't want to see it go away, but I don't want to see the city running it either, because that's their tax money, and it'd be good for them to run it themselves, so.
It gives some additional flexibility during a transition.
Okay.
All right. Then we have a motion on the floor to move the staff recommendation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries, thank you. We have no second readings this evening. Is there anyone signed up for public comment? No, all right. And then, under new business, I have no items, but we have a counselor's item on 10.2, and that's from Counselor Thomas. Counselor, would you like to introduce a motion?
Yes, I move that the council transfer $2,000 from the general fund contingency to reimburse actual expenses for the March 26, 2013 homeless connect event.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Thomas and seconded by Counselor Clem to transfer $2,000 from the general fund contingency for the purpose of the $2,000 grant to the homeless connect event, and is there discussion? Counselor Tesler?
Thank you. I'd like to, at this time, make a substitute motion, and my substitute motion would be that I would like to refer the homeless connect event to the Social Services Advisory Board for their consideration and further action.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Tesler and seconded by Counselor Bennett to move, to refer this item to the Social Services Advisory Board for their consideration and processing. And, okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Hold it.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Counselor Dickey?
I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask, I wanted to hear Counselor Thomas address her motion before I consider this other motion, is, how do we do that?
Oh, I'm sorry, did I not call for, for comment? I, I do apologize.
Mayor, can I just make one clarification? I just now noticed that the, next to the last line, it says expenses for two rental vans, it should be dental vans. I don't know if that makes any difference, but I just wanted to be accurate about that.
Oh, good, okay. Counselor Thomas, I do apologize to you for speeding along here, okay? Would you like to address your motion?
So is, are we in order to?
Yes, you can address your motion.
Okay. This motion came about because it was brought to Counselor Clem and my attention to fund this, through this process, and from my understanding, in talking with Herm and Cindy to get some clarification as to why they didn't go through the funding cycle to do so, and they informed me that the process was a little bit stringent for them to apply for such a small amount of money. Now, I understand that they've come before this council before to ask for funding for this project, and in meeting with Herm and Cindy and Linda, we had a pretty good discussion on some of the reasons why they didn't follow through with doing this, this time, and we're going to also look at the application processes for small amounts of money, because it kind of deters those individuals or groups out there who are wanting to apply for small amounts, but because the process is kind of long or tedious, or whatever the case may be, it deters them from doing so. With having said that, I feel that this is a great event. It helps a group of individuals who, on a normal basis, can't get those services that they would get in this one day at this particular event. I've been a participant at this event to actually sit down and talk with these individuals in doing intakes. Their situations and how they got to that point may have been different, but the needs are the same. I feel that if we can outsource funding for a video to promote the city in what we do here, I think it's important to also fund something like this that's going to help a group of people that won't necessarily get these resources on a daily basis as quickly as they will at this particular event. In my experience, the golden rule is to do unto others as you will have them do unto you, to feed the hungry, to clothe the naked, to shelter the homeless, and these people need our help. And so I am asking you all to support this motion. We did talk about, after this event is over, that we're going to get together with Linda and the staff to streamline that process so that they can apply for this funding for the next cycle, so.
Counselor Tesler?
Thank you. I, you know, do not, I recognize this is an important need, and I don't want to debate the need. This isn't about the need, this is about the process. And so we need to just separate the need and the process here. What I see is a pattern of an organization that doesn't want to go through the process, and they don't want to follow the rules. And we have asked numerous other people to fill out applications and follow the rules for, I would imagine, amounts of $2,000 or perhaps smaller or larger. And, you know, I run a program where people come and ask me for money, and if they don't have the time and can't fill out the application, then they must not need my money. And I cannot, I would be remiss in skipping these people forward of everyone else who has followed the rules and the process and filled out maybe a tedious application. But I haven't seen the application, you said it's two pages, did you?
The, the application is online. Applications of this size typically take about an hour, I'm told, but it is online, it's a new, it's a, it's a new form. My understanding is that- I'm told. But it is online. It's a new, it's a new form. My understanding is that Midwell Lamitt Valley has applied for applications. I think they'd be the applicant here because that's who the funding is actually going through. They're familiar with the form, and I think they've, they obviously applied before. So that's, I know that before it was online, it was a different application, but it was, it was a hard copy.
So, that being said, I would think that $2,000 would be worth an hour of someone's time. I just, I would. And I just, in my mind, I think it's wrong, and I think it's arbitrary and capricious to encourage this kind of behavior, to encourage people to circumvent the process and come to us, which they've done two years in a row now, and as far as I know, would plan to do next year, too. And I don't want to encourage that behavior. That's not behavior that we should reinforce or encourage. And again, separating the need from the process. It's not fair to everyone else in the process, and that's why I'm not going to support this.
And Counselor Benars?
I don't know who to ask this question to. A question I have at hand, if you delay the funding, is it going to prevent the Homeless Connect from happening this year? Nobody has the answer?
Probably not.
Because I agree with Counselor Tesler. I mean, there is a process that you need to go through in order to, and this is what, this is exactly what that committee is there for, is to go through and sieve through those people who apply.
Counselor Clem, excuse me. Mr. Wales, did you have a comment?
I just want to make a clarification that everybody would understand. It's the cycle of which we're talking about. The cycle, the process that's going on right now, the Social Service Advisory Board will be making recommendations on which projects to fund, and it will be included in the budget, and the council will be either adopting or not adopting it. The money that we're talking about today is for fiscal year 1314. So, they've missed the funding for next year, for the event in, in March 2014 as well. So I just want to make sure people, everybody understands that we're two years behind in the cycle. This, this request is to fund for this year, right? I believe it's in the April event. That would have closed back in December of 20, what, 2011, or 2012. So, we're off a year. Correcting this problem is, or this request is for, we're off a year. Is that clear or helpful?
Counselor Claussen?
On that, though, I do want to make sure I'm clear. This request, the motion, is for this upcoming event on March 26th, so it would be for this future event. But yours, I think the motion from Counselor Tesler, if I understood it right, was to send this specific counselor's motion to Social Services Advisory Board for consideration with a recommendation back to council on this. Not, this is totally, has nothing to do with all the other applications, whether they were missed, or whether it's still open. This is just totally separate. That's the way I'm seeing it and understanding it, so they can make recommendation back to us. I just want to make sure we're staying outside, this is completely outside the process or other money is allocated to Social Services Board.
Right. All right. Counselor Clem, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did. Thank you, Madam Mayor. To that end, if a motion is proved to send it back to the Social Services Advisory Board, they'd be looking at a request or an application that they voted on a year ago. They voted on 1213 last February. So not only has the ship sailed, it's halfway across the sea. So for that reason, I can't support the motion because we're asking them to claw back as though this application just got missed or something, or whatever. And I, what compels me to vote in support of Counselor Thomas's motion is just that there's a tremendous need. And you know what? Somebody screwed up. And at this point in time, there's going to be hundreds of people there, and, you know, we've got rules, and we need to follow them, but just every once in a while, we've got to remember what the event is. So it's, I just wanted to ask for clarification. It's, this money looks like it's for the two dental vans.
I'm sorry, the money looks like?
It looks like it's for two dental vans.
Two dental vans.
Dental vans.
And in table and chair rentals.
Right. And if the request is not approved, do the, do we not have dentists able to perform dental services, is my question?
And I think Mr. Boz would be a better one to answer that.
We already have the dental vans reserved to come, and so the two dental vans are reserved to come, and we're in the process now of getting volunteer dentists to come and volunteer their time to, to be part of that. And so...
How many people do you think will get dental services?
Usually, there's around 25 to 30 people in each van, and, which leverages somewhere around $30,000 worth of dental work for about $1,400, so. And could I just say something?
Certainly.
One of the reasons we struggle with this is because of the collaborative form of this event. There's no lead agency that leads this event. Community Action Agency, they have a lot invested in it, and we do run the funds through them. But we share the responsibility of this event, and we look at it as a community event, and there's no one organization that says, this is my program, because we have all these partners that sit around the table together, and we plan it together. An email goes out, you know, I'll give Nancy a call and say, I think it's time we get together. She's, I think it's time, too. And then we put an email out, and a group of people come together, and we begin, we begin to put this together. And so, that's what's unique about it. If it was a program of an agency, it would be quarterly. They would know what's going on, and they would have a plan, and it would be part of their agenda to go after the funds every year. And folks like me, who have no understanding of how this works, I'm learning, and it's a good learning process. But that's really, I think, would you say that's true?
I'm not sure how the event's organized. I understand the collaborativeness of it. Probably the recommendation would be to have some entity, one of the partners on point every year, to be responsible for, if this component is required. That would be a recommendation.
Okay.
Suggestion.
Counselor Bennett, and then Counselor Thomas?
Yeah, I, you know, Herm, I, I can't believe Salem Leadership Foundation can't figure out how to apply for a $2,000 grant. That's, I guess, somebody involved ought to be able to figure that part out, and particularly with this history of apply, not apply, apply, not apply. This, I'm so confused now as to which year this is for. I'm not sure Counselor Clem described it right. I'm not sure I understood what's going on here. Are we talking about last year's money, or what?
This is that applications are due the end of the year for the next fiscal year events. So last November, December, it would be for this event. By last, I mean in 2011. This year's process for something in March would have had to be in that year. For March of 2014, they would be applying right now, or would have applied in January, I guess.
They passed the...
They passed twice.
I mean, really, Counselor Thomas, I would suggest that the correct motion is $4,000 because these people will be back next year because they haven't done their application this year, just like they didn't last year. But they did the year before. They figured, somebody was able to collect together this group of agencies that survive on grants. That's all these groups do, is apply for grants, all the different groups. They supply on that and contributions. I, you know, we've all been involved in nonprofits. We've all probably written grants. It's, there's nothing too complicated here. I, the thing that bugs me is it becomes willful. And it becomes a willful thing where I can get somebody to make this motion, we can try to shame people into this position, and we'll get our money, and it's a heck of a lot easier, although you're taking my time, a heck of a lot easier than people who are responsible for all of the homeless and all these other services doing their job, which is, that's what it is. When we're on, whether it's volunteer or paid, it's their job. And I, if I sound frustrated, it's because it is frustrating. We've seen it from other groups. I've seen the Carousel come around looking for money. I've seen other groups come in the back door because they don't get what they want, doing it like everybody else has to. And I'm one of those people who stands in line and resents line jumpers. So I find this very frustrating. And what's so frustrating is the people affected are the innocent victims of homelessness in need of dental care. You know, shame on whoever puts this thing together for being so derelict and doing their job. They forgot to take care of their client. It's not our responsibility. It's their responsibility. And it's just, we've got this Social Services Commission that weighs and measures these things and looks at important priorities. I mean, this has taken money away from rape victims. This has taken money away from hungry children. This is taking money away from all the other kinds of social services we do because they won't come in and do the job. And it, it bugs me. I mean, I'm, I'm very tempted, Counselor, to join you in just giving them the money just because they're so irresponsible, but it is also really frustrating.
I don't think that's...
Really frustrating. I think it is irresponsible. Sorry. They're taking my time, coming around here year after year, not doing their job. And we hear this all the time. It's just very, very frustrating.
Counselor Benars?
I can make a small suggestion.
I'm sorry. Excuse me. I did say Counselor Thomas first. I'm sorry.
First, I want to say I do understand the process versus the needs. I, I got that. The purpose for this is, and we talked about this when we met with Linda, that I would support this, but they would apply for the grant the next go-around, and we would work with them. Because the Community Action Agency is channeling the funds through them this year, another group may have the funds go through them another year. So, so who do you get this group to, to appoint a certain group every year to do this when they each switch off? So that's, that's the issue right there. I totally understand the processes in, in not opening the door for everybody else to come through. That I got that when I, this came to me. That's why I asked the questions, to get the clarification, so that we could come to the table and have that discussion, so that we could eliminate this from happening again. So, there you have it. I support it. I hope that everybody else will support it because it's needed.
Counselor Benars?
I can make this real short. I can make two suggestions. One is Salem Leadership Foundation is a wonderful organization that could very well, I don't want to obligate them because I'm not them. The other one is Salem's Free Medical Clinic at the Salem Alliance Church has dental chairs. They do this stuff already, and I'm sure they're into and have knowledge of and can work with you. Just have to ask them.
Counselor Claussen?
Yeah, I think I'm going to support Counselor Tesler's motion, simply that I didn't see the rest of the applications. I don't even know what the rest of the money's going to. I don't know what else is out there. I don't know if there are other things. I'd rather send this back to Social Security Advisory Board, because they're the ones who review them all, have them come back to us and say, hey, look, this is very fitting. We understand that the application can be cumbersome, and so, yeah, we think it's probably a good idea to use the general fund, and that's their advisory role to us. They don't make a decision on the general fund, but they make an advisory decision on worthy and unworthy types of nonprofits. And, you know, I think that, I don't know how often they meet, but my guess would be that they'll be able to do that, and this motion is asking for reimbursement. So obviously, there's already cash sitting somewhere to pay for this, so they got to pay for it so we can reimburse them for it. So it's not like this is time-sensitive. I'd rather see the Social Services Advisory Board look at this and give us a recommendation, just because I'd be curious what they say.
All right. Counselor Dickey?
Yeah, I, I think I do like the idea of the Advisory Board taking a look at this. I'm not willing to let it drop because I do believe it's a really important event, and I would like to know what they have to say. They look at these applications all the time, and they might have some insight as to why. I mean, this, as Counselor Bennett said, this isn't the first group to come to us and say, I had trouble with the application for any number of reasons that people will say. So I'd love to hear what their recommendation is for this particular request, and if, if they happen to offer any insight into the application process, that would be helpful as well. My one concern about funding this, and it has nothing to do with funding the event, because I'm all for funding this event, and I, you know, wish that this money already was dedicated to someone who, you know, to, through the normal process, and we wouldn't be having this discussion, is that in this particular case, this is last year's money. And so next year, it's too late to apply for next year. So this particular organization or group of organizations, I'm having a hard time understanding that makeup of that would either have to come to us next year or just wait two more years before they have an opportunity to get funded for this. And so I'm, I'm just kind of throwing it out there as a rhetorical question, wondering what happens next year? And maybe as a recommendation that this group that runs the Homeless Connect, or a group of groups, or whatever, should be thinking about who will be writing that application come this November, December, and have that ready for two years from now, I think if I have it right, so.
All right. Any further discussion? We'll call for the question. And the motion before us is from Counselor Tesler. Counselor Tesler, could you please repeat your motion?
I'll try. I move that this be referred to the Social Services Advisory Board for their further review and consideration.
Okay. And the second to that motion was by whom? By Counselor Bennett. All right. It's been moved by Counselor Tesler and seconded by Counselor Bennett to refer this to the Social Service Advisory Board, to refer back to us? Was that the, or simply to take action, or?
Make a recommendation and bring it back to council?
Bring it back to council. Okay, thank you. All right. All those in favor of the substitute motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
And the nays are Counselors Claussen and Counselor Thomas and... I'm sorry. Counselor Clem and Counselor Thomas. All right. Motion carried. Thank you very much. All right. And we have no further business to come before us. We do have an executive session following in the City Manager's Conference Room. So I will see you all there shortly. Thank you.